Ready to roll? All right, well, good evening, welcome to the Berlin Select Board. We will be having a joint meeting with our FinCon folks a little bit later. Today is November 4th. Tomorrow, don't forget to vote. Calling the meeting to order at 6:31. All right, approval of minutes, we only have one in the packet, which is the October 21st. Any questions on that one?
I just had a question about, how do you spell Mr. Deedee's last name?
D E E D Y.
Oh, D Y.
Okay, that's why, that's why I had seen it somewhere else like that, but I just wasn't sure.
Okay, other than that, we good to go?
Yes, I'm fine. I'll make the motion to approve of the minutes with that spelling correction.
And I can second it. All right, any other further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd sting.
Because you're something.
Yeah, but if you watch it, you can vote. If you watch the playback, you can vote, yeah, because it's come up in a couple of other meetings that people haven't been there, but they've watched.
You can always vote, it's just better if you've seen it than know.
Well, these were fine, these were fine, so I'll vote yes.
All righty. All right, so next up, general public comment. Nothing, all right, moving on. Hearings and appointments, so first up, we would like to have our COA person come down to the front. Can move the mic a little close to you, I'm hearing some feedback. So, just want to make a note for the public that during this discussion and our other one for the Rec Director, I will not be accepting public comments or questions. Okay, so if you could take a second or more, who you are, why you're here, why you're qualified, and then the board may have a few questions for you, and then I'll talk to Kristen about the recommendation, and off we go.
Okay, I am Melissa Sargent. I am applying for the Director position with the COA. I currently work for the Clinton Council on Aging as the Outreach Coordinator there. I've been there for about three and a half years. And Berlin just felt like the next step for me. It's a smaller community, kind of like Clinton, hardworking people that need help and assistance. And I bring the outreach perspective is my strong suit here, so I think that's, that's going to be beneficial to the community. Looking forward to collaborating with other areas in the town, 19 Carter, the library, wherever I can pull strengths from, in my experience from outreach into the community.
Excellent. Scott, do you have any questions from Melissa?
Just on the process, the Hiring Committee was made up of whom?
We had a five-member panel that was comprised of two members of the Council on Aging, Bob Blair and it was Lori Fairbey, right? Okay, gosh, it seems like it was years ago. We had myself and we had Personnel Committee Sue Tarian. And we did have unfortunately, an outside COA Director who had to cancel last minute due to illness. So we were, Deb McQuillan, who actually has a strong background in case management for geriatric care, was kind enough to come down here with zero notice and sit in on the panel for us at the last minute. We were really thankful for that.
And just on process again, I know this because, but how many candidates did you do interviews with?
We did interviews with four candidates and Melissa was the recommended candidate from the panel.
Sorry, there weren't questions for you.
Nope, that's okay.
The process is an important thing too, just to make sure that it is a clear and clear process, but I'm, I'm fine.
Chris?
I just would introduce myself, Chris Keefe. I've been the liaison to the COA and try to attend as many meetings as I can. It's, it's sometimes a little easier when it's like a Zoom meeting or hybrid.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that we'll get back on track again soon.
We can work on how to set that up.
So you come to the town at an interesting time of year called budget fun. Some people may not call it fun. We know that money's tight, money has always been a concern for all our departments. Where do you see or what are you looking at in terms of grants, looking for outside opportunities to potentially bring services, programs, something into the town that we don't have?
There are a few websites online that you can go for grant searches. One is the Grant Proposal Portal, I'm sorry, the Grant Portal. With that, you can see what is out there, but like everything, it has a cost to it. So unless you have it in your budget to be a part of it, I keep, right now I get the newsletters from them. But if you want to see the detail of it, you have to pay for it. So right now what I do is find them and then give them to my current Director. That would change if I was the Director, I would just be able to apply for them. There's outside funding as far as in my senior center, which we, you guys don't currently have now. It does keep track of all of the check-ins that you have at the center, any of the programs that people are coming to. And that allows you to then get a formula grant based off of your numbers and checking in, that number will go up based on your, you know, your check-ins and the people attending your events. So I think that would be another way to try to get some more funding in here, not from just the town people, you know, the outside numbers would, would help. That's where it starts.
And Kristen is our Procurement Cruise Director, so if the opportunity.
So I'm going to Kristen, yeah, ask you.
Absolutely.
I am also taking a class, I have Estebet After Dark, I have signed up for previous to applying for this position. So I have grant seeking and grant writing on the next two Thursdays, actually. So hopefully that'll give me even more areas to pull from, not just the two that I know of, so.
Right. Yeah, that was really my only question, any other ones from the board?
Well, I'm really excited. We found a good person from everything I've read from what you provided.
And I have to say too, that we did actually have a strong candidate pool. And we did, had four great interviews, but Melissa really rose to the top with her experience and especially, you know, just the approach that we believe that she would take from a collaborative perspective, a data-driven perspective, which is something we've all talked about, and that was something that she had brought up independently. And we asked about collaborations with other groups, and one of the first ones she brought up was, was recreation. So we, you know, that all of the thoughts that we kind of had in questions that we were thinking, her thinking was similar along those lines. So that made me feel very comfortable with the recommendation of the panel.
Any other questions? No, anyone ready to make a motion?
Right, I'm understanding you make the recommendation that the process is that unless we object, you can make it on your own in 14 days, but that our motion can short circuit those, which I.
Except, this is a department head, so this is actually a vote of the Select Board, it's slightly different.
Okay, I have no problem making the motion that we hire Melissa as our Council on Aging Director.
Second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks. Let the fun begin. All senior problems solved by next Monday?
Yes, next Monday, we'd like a written report, you know, Cole's budget, everything in hand, no problem.
Next Monday is a holiday, so maybe two.
Oh, two Mondays.
We'll give you two Mondays.
So given that, Cole.
You said the expectation of what a tough guy we are, huh?
Yes, yes, so Cole, I'll give you the same spiel, you want to take a few minutes, who you are, why you're here, and then we'll ask some questions.
Look at awesome, first, thank you for the invitation and for this process. I'm Cole, I consider myself actually a proud generalist. I've experienced in workforce development, parks and recreation, emergency management, and I'm very passionate about community services, municipal government, and specifically my time that I spent in recreation, not only at the municipal level, but in a higher education level. So I really bring, when I refer to as a cradle of grave approach to parks and recreation, where, you know, as Rec professionals, we serve everyone in the community. So very excited that my new sister department is, is proud of and excited about collaboration because that's the exact same approach that I believe recreation should, should take. There really is a hand-in-hand department where we're working together to serve all members of the community. So yeah, as I mentioned, you know, my, kind of my background stems as a foundation of an Eagle Scout. You know, I've worked in, at higher ed specifically, and as a Recreation Director at Town, as a Deputy Director, and, and really excited to support the Recreation Committee here and that servant leadership approach to, to continue the great work that they're doing while also building upon that and then making it a strong agency within this community.
Thank you, appreciate it. Scott?
I think I'll start with, there was a, there was a five-person hiring committee who was on that, and how many people did you interview?
Yes, so we had a five-person committee, we had a representative from Recreation, Felicia Wheeler-Low. We had myself, we had the Clint, was it the Clinton Recreation Director? Yes, okay, sorry, now, we did these both back-to-back days, so apologize. We had Personnel Committee Sue Tarian, and because so much funding comes from CPA, we had Tim Wheeler representing CPA.
Great. This is a new position for the town. Just off the sort of top of your head, are thoughts about how do we sort of evaluate success? Does this position do what we're thinking we're doing it for the town? What thought you have about how you would measure your ability to have impact?
It's a great question, again, as mentioned a moment ago, everything should be data-driven. And the second piece is, it's really a blend of, not to be a total nerd here, but qualitative and quantitative data, right? So it needs to meet the, the mission of the Port of Selectmen, the Recreation Committee, you know, doing actual surveys, community surveys, focus groups, and, and really taking all that information and doing something with it. And then, you know, having a, a due date of when we're going to measure and evaluate, did we achieve our goals? So I'm definitely about not just throwing stuff out there, but being deliberate because, you know, it is, it's a, it's a pool of funds that we need to be sensitive to, it's public funds that we need to be sensitive to. And we want to make sure that we're making the right decisions and moving the needle. So all about taking data-driven approaches to, to do the right community programs, the right time for the right people.
Great, thanks, that's the only question I have.
Have you shared with Cole and, and everybody else in, in this process, the two paragraphs, I believe, that is the description of recreation? It's, I think it was in one of, it may have been in the year we approved Recreation. I don't know what year it would have been, but it would have been in the town report. Or do you have a copy of it?
I actually do not.
Okay.
Is this like the, the, what's the word?
Probably like a mission.
Right, mission of the Recreation Committee.
I just was curious if, you know, you had shared that with.
I did not, but I will find it and I will share it.
Okay, it's really short, so, but, you know, it gets to the point.
Absolutely, yeah, and those things, and the mission, right, with this, the charter, and then there's also, you know, a mission which should be ever-changing and evolving to meet the needs of the current community too, so.
It might be something in the state too, but this is something I think that they chose as a, like a description.
Of course.
When they voted to have the five-member Recreation Committee.
Charge was the word I was looking for. Typically, you have a composition and a charge when you, when you put a committee together, and this is not a commission, it's a, it's a committee that is appointed by the Select Board, so I will certainly find that and we'll forward it on.
June might be able to help you.
Oh, I bet she will, she has everything, I love it.
Those of us that have been around.
She's looking, she's taking notes down.
Stop writing, you can stop writing because.
Is it up on?
I got it.
Oh.
Oh.
Hey.
She's showing us all up now.
So if you go, if you remember, go to the townofberlin.com website and under Government, look up Recreation Committee. And it talks to you about the CHADA, which is to plan and execute programs of recreation and leisure activities for people of all ages in town, and then it's got a link which will bounce you to the 2017 Town Report, which is two pages.
Working awesome, thank you.
You're welcome, see, I saved you. You're welcome. Do you have any other questions?
No.
All right, so Cole, I'm going to ask you the same question along the line that I asked Melissa, where you had talked about, you know, sometimes we have limited pools of funds. So what's your experience with going after grants, looking them up, trying to find alternate ways so that you're not continually going back to CPA saying, or coming to the town saying?
Right, yeah, so it's wonderful to have a CPA that has been so wonderful to Recreation. It's also important that we make sure that we're, as we're building, that we need to maintain these new facilities. So that, you know, that's something that I always think about is before we put this money forward, and we have to hopefully get it, and then how do we maintain these facilities? Because the last thing we want to do is put these great buildings together, great facilities together, and if we can't maintain them, then to me, that's not a good use of our funds, right? So we have to be kind of forward-thinking on those things. For, for programming, there's a lot of creative ways that we can do things, whether it's programming or administrative. So I've put through like AmeriCorps bank grants, which is great for, for building capacity for personnel. I've done EMPG grants, which are emergency preparedness grants, and community cultural grants, if you guys are familiar, those are, those are things. So I'm very familiar with writing grants, I'm very familiar with managing grants, and I'm very creative at finding partners when needed, because that's a big part of it too. It's like, how do we, you know, work together to try to achieve these goals? And so I'm pretty creative there. There's also ways to do, you know, competitive programming, you know, if we want to do a, you know, a pumpkin carving competition with Clinton, right? Right, we could do something cool like that, right? So I mean, there's a lot of creative ways to team up with our sister agencies externally as well to come up with creative programming. So it's, it's something I have a, grants are something I have a lot of experience with finding, writing and administering, which is all equally important.
Flamingos crossing town lines.
Flamingos, yes, the battle of the flamingos with Angelica.
We had, instead of a scarecrow contest, the creator of the pink plastic lawn flamingo was from Berlin.
No way, that's so cool.
They're made in Leominster, but the person was from Berlin.
I'm a big flamingo fan.
There you go, so we had a flaming crow decorating contest where we decorated pink lawn flamingos, and they were on the lawn of the library, so maybe we take it to, as you said, a neighboring town.
There you go.
Standoff.
Yep.
Just saying, it's opportunities, awesome, thank you. Any other questions, Ben Ward? Nope, Kristen, any other input from your interview panel?
Um, no.
All right, is there a motion on the table?
You want me to make the motion, Scott?
Sure.
Okay.
Spread the love.
I will make a motion to hire Cole Pirelli as our Recreation Director.
I'll second it.
All right, any other discussions?
I'd actually just quickly, I want to make sure that we make sure that Cole gets the right supports, that you're not from the town, it'll take some time to get used to serve all the various players in here. And, and just to, we are not always, sometimes the most welcoming to outsiders and how we sort of help make sure that you're successful the best we can in that position.
Sure, as an outsider who has tried to infiltrate, I think that I can certainly help with that and we'll make that a focus. I also have to say, I think that one of the first things you said in your interview that really struck me was when you came to Canton, there were very specific events that had very specific names associated with them, and it was extremely important to you to maintain the culture and history of what was going on in that community. And that really struck me as important, that, that you were wanting, not just wanting to uphold, but you understood the importance of upholding the local traditions, and that is very important in a small community. So I think that will, will put you in, on a good path if you hold that as your guiding principle.
Nice, thank you, so we have a motion and a second, no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
So the both of you start to work together.
Yep.
Grantor, grantee.
My office is open if you want to go down the hall and just get, get going right now.
And we're always here, please know for the both of you that we're always here, just drop a note. If you want to pop on the agenda, we'll get you on the agenda to come to talk to all of us, so our door is open. All right, well, so we bid before seven, our friends have not shown up yet, thank you.
Thank you very much, yes.
So why don't we skip on down, because I don't want to short-change our EV discussion. So Kristen, want to take it away with your TA report?
Absolutely, we've, we've had a couple of breaking developments, if you will, today, I feel like a bit of a news reporter. But in an unfortunate case of Groundhog Day, the alarm system at Berlin Memorial School went today, I believe the word that was used was fried. It cannot communicate with the fire alarm pump or the monitoring company at this time, and it requires a fire detail for the school to remain open. We did go through this last year around this time. So what they're doing right now is compiling a list of parts that are needed. They don't know how long it will take to get the parts in and install them, I mean, this really feels very, very similar. So there will be a detail from 7:30 to 4:30 and nighttime for sports as there is availability. So I know the sports season is coming on, we faced some challenges with that last year. We're going to have to ask for some patience with the Fire Department, as, as you know, they have a lot of open shifts as it is, and now they're going to be trying to fill detail shifts as well. I did put a call into the Superintendent today to talk about how they're going to file the insurance claim to make sure that we get that all squared away upfront, because we did have a little bit of an issue with getting reimbursement from the insurance company and getting some of our mutual aid partners paid last year for some of the details they assisted with, and I want to make sure that we get that all squared away from the very beginning this year. So unfortunately, not good news, but we have a plan and a path moving forward. Also, if it could rain, it would help us out tremendously, but unfortunately, in the interim, the Fire Chief has issued an outdoor burning ban, and this applies to fire pits, chimeneas, outdoor fireplaces, cooking and heating equipment, because we don't need the 120-plus acre fire that we had up at Mount Pisgah last year. And because it is so dry, these fires are burning 12-plus inches deep. And it is really impossible, we've been assisting other communities with mutual aid, and we would like to avoid having that occur here. So we appreciate everyone's, you know, patience and understanding with that. And last but not least, as you just saw, we have two new employees. We are talking about doing some office moves to make sure that we have some space for employees. And I just thought, you know, sometimes I have a bit of a go-big-or-go-home idea, and while we're doing this, let's do it right and do it once and not have to do it again. Like to bring the COA Director up here, onto the main floor here. And we'd like to, as the Recreation Director is only going to be here a few hours per week, have the, potentially have the Recreation Director use the office downstairs for the few hours that they're going to be here. So we're kind of talking about that. Also seeing if we could move the Treasure Collector, meaning Sergio, who actually does the collecting, to the Veterans Office that has a counter where people could actually come in to the office and be able to take payments there. And then having the COA Director either where the, am I saying it wrong? Sergio's old office or on the other side. So talking about trying to just make a few office moves that'll be a little bit more comfortable, I think it makes sense to have folks up on the main floor that are here more full-time. And yeah, so there's that. In terms of budget and town meeting, we met with the FinCon to finalize the budget package last week. And obviously, we're going to be meeting shortly tonight to discuss the warrant and vote the recommendations on the financial articles for the December 9th Town Meeting. The Personnel Committee met on October 30th and voted unanimously to support the recommended 2% COLA for FY '26 with unfortunately, no market or merit increases at this time, given the number of budget uncertainties. And I will be asking the Select Board later on this evening to vote on that as well. I have completed all FY '24 Department Head Performance Appraisals, and I'm finalizing the written evaluations. I'm also in the process of uploading all of the FY '26 capital requests that we've received onto their folder. And so that's really taken the bulk of what I've been working on the past couple of weeks. Just another reminder, Winter Special Town Meeting is December 9th at 6:30 PM at Berlin Memorial School Gym. The warrant did close on October 28th, and we have 12 articles that we will be discussing this evening. Very good news about the South Commons Brown Barn demolition project, we received 12 quotes, which I was shocked about. And the low bid came in at 16,000, our original estimate was 26, so that is huge. We're in the process of reviewing the documentation to make sure everything is squared away, getting insurance, all of those ducks in a row. Unfortunately, 1870 was not as lucky. We received one quote for $38,600, more than double the available ARPA funding. So the Town Hall Committee, and we'll talk about this when we get to ARPA, is requesting to repurpose this funding to just do the interior staircase and a couple of other interior repairs. As you know, we had our interviews, I did meet with Maya, along with the Treasure Collector, regarding retiree health insurance, which is facing some premium increases in '25 due to new federal laws that are taking effect. If you've heard about new Medicare laws that are taking effect, unfortunately, what's happening is they're shifting the burden from the Medicare recipients to the insurance companies, and so the insurance companies are shifting that burden back to the towns and businesses. So ultimately, it's ending up hitting people on the premium side. So it's really just a cost-shifting thing that doesn't really help anyone all that much. We also had our Green Communities Kickoff Grant with the state to fund the HVAC improvements at the town offices. And we were just notified, this just in late today, that we are receiving an award for reducing our energy consumption by 20% since we started as a green community. So this is huge, and that's going out to all the board members, you're all invited. It is, I will give you the date in case anybody wants to mark it down, it was literally like a, this just in. Let's see, Kelly sent that to me. And we'll forward it to you so you can sign up for it. They will be recognizing Berlin for reaching a major milestone, reducing our energy consumption by at least 20% from our baseline year. That is going to be Friday, November 22nd, from 12:30 to 2:00 at the Devens Conference Center. And we will forward the official invite to you as well, that just came through today. And I believe that's it.
So I had one question to you.
Yes.
Where we're talking about shifting over the offices, we've had issues in the past with space down in the COA rooms and lack of courtesy for that room. And also know that other people just dump their stuff in there with no regard for that, so how will that, don't need to answer now, but in your noggin, think about how we can start to cure that so that we don't run into those issues. I mean, whether Cole is down there or Melissa has to spend some time down there, that they're not picking up somebody else's trash, or moving stuff that someone just decided, oh, I'll just put it in here because I have no other room for it.
Okay. Got it.
That's a good question.
Of course you can. How, how are we going to get the word out to the residents that there's a fire ban? Usually the item pushes it to all her followers as well, maybe, what's today, Monday? Well, what about a, one of those reverse 911?
Reverse, right.
Reverse, right. Reverse code. That's an appropriate use of it too. Cause that gets people who don't follow social media and it's something that I think is.
Go out every time somebody's reporting that somebody else is burning.
Right, doesn't not hurt in the first place.
Waste, don't waste the fire people's time.
Makes a lot of sense.
And, um, the other question I had was on the eighteen seventy, the quote, you know, that we got that was high. Um, did, was it discussed at all that perhaps we could do just refinishing of the stairs rather than carpeting?
Um, that's a good question. That was the recommendation of the eighteen seventy committee. There used to be those, not full carpeting, but those little and somebody ripped them out. Um, so.
Refinish the floor.
I, I don't think so. Apparently they put down little like temporary sticky ones that are now curling up and creating a tripping hazard. So because the stairs were slippery, which was the impetus for putting down those, they're almost like the, like the runner. It looks like a custom runner that went through the stairs. So I think the concern was that they were slippery without having that on there.
Well, I, I just remember going to Gird's Town Hall. And I don't believe they had any carpeting and, um, it, it was really gorgeous.
So refinishing, you're saying instead of.
Refinish the, the stairs or the areas that need to be done rather than carpeting. I think it's less expensive.
I do have Evy on standby for questions, so, um, I can have her come over when we get to that article, um, to answer that for you. I'll, I'll, I'll send her a heads up.
Okay. Any other questions, Scott?
I'm good.
All right, look at that. And it's just a few minutes after seven. Welcome FinCom people. Nice to see you. Um, Mr. Scott, if you want to call your team together. Yeah, the answer is yes, Scott.
Uh, call the order Berlin Finance Committee.
At seven oh three, and I forgot to say this, so I'll say it now. Open session, public meetings are subject to being recorded. Your image and voice will forever be on the interweb. So, all right.
Funny because the, the official quote says maybe recorded as we're streaming live on two different platforms. So.
I know, we may need to up.
Not only will it be on.
Need to up this a little bit, you know, to say.
Fair, fair enough.
Yeah, your eye rolls, your print never be on the interweb for people to find.
Forever and ever and ever.
So thanks for coming. Nice to see you. Get some little, uh, efficiencies done. Um, so Kristen, do we want to just jump in and start to go through the town warrant?
I would love to if that works for everyone. Um, and there are several, I wanted to kind of have this be combined because the FinCom had an opportunity to hear about this, as did you last week and go through it. But this is the final version and there are, um, several articles that have financial implications that the FinCom has to actually vote on. So if you would indulge a vote from them, but I figured I could answer both of your questions all at the same time and kill two birds with one stone. So what you now have before you is actually a twelve article warrant. Um, this is the final warrant for town meeting unless, uh, I find a Scribner's error of sorts. Um, so I would like to allow myself that. Um, we have adjusted article one to now being just one motion and that is the hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that we're all very familiar with from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund to police department wages to address the additional funds provided to the Berlin Boylston Regional School District out of free cash for their FY twenty five budget. So I, that is a vote of the FinCom required. I don't know if anyone has any questions on that article that they'd like to ask.
And Mr. Shartner is in the back, so I'm sure if there are some questions, we could ask him to come on down to the front. Over to you.
Right, so just do a, have a motion for article one?
I'll second the motion to approve the, uh, language as written.
Okay, any other discussion? Cover this for a while. Okay, uh, we'll call Scott I.
Uh, Mary I.
Heidi I.
Cliff I.
And passes four zero.
Yeah.
Or approved or recommended four zero.
Okay. Uh, any questions on that item from the board? Okay, uh, article two is the Public Safety Second Floor Renovation Project Funding. Um, proposing to move four hundred and fifty five thousand dollars from the Public Safety Stabilization Fund to complete the second floor renovation project. Um, the estimated cost at this time is seven hundred thousand dollars, which contains the fifteen percent fee to ASABIT for the cost of the construction work plus the building materials. So a hundred and seventy five thousand in Public Safety mitigation fund, mitigation funds, excuse me, were allocated at the May twenty twenty four annual town meeting to get the project started. There were also seventy thousand remaining in, um, ARPA funds for the project, which leaves a balance of the four fifty five to complete the project. And wanting to just point out again that without the assistance of ASABIT, the cost to do this project was estimated to be over one point eight million dollars. So this is quite a significant savings. Any questions from the board or the FinCom on this one?
No, I, I think it's important when we talk about it's not just the savings. I think again, it's giving our, our local kids opportunities and real life experience. It's going to help them get jobs after high school doing trades. I, I mean, I, I think it's a win not only for the town, but it's a win for the students involved.
And it's the first really multi, um, not jurisdictional, multi disciplinary. Thank you. Um, project that they've had the opportunity to work on. So not only are the folks working on electrical, learning how to do electrical work, but they're learning how to work with plumbers and construction folks. And so it's really a cross-discipline approach that ASABIT was very excited about taking on.
The, the, um, yeah, the building next to the eighteen, uh, right, next to. Yeah, the caritorial storage was also built by ASABIT and they did a wonderful job.
And this number is in line with what we were sort of estimating. This would be when we talked about it at Maytown meeting and passed the original amount.
Yes.
It's just that this, the check hadn't arrived yet where we could have done it at Maytown.
Correct. We literally received the check about two days after we finalized the warrant for Maytown meeting.
They're usually pretty good sending it forward beforehand.
Yeah, it was close. It was very close, but we try to get that warrant out as soon as we can too for the residents. So.
I'm just checking math. Peg's checking math, uh, uh, to make sure that it does come up to seven hundred because I don't want a resident like last time and that we had bad math.
Are we okay?
Yeah, we, oh, Peg has good math.
Okay, I just. Cause I checked it like three times.
I know.
Okay.
But yeah, no, just want to avoid the, your math is wrong, um, at a town meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Okay, uh, the motion is to, uh, recommend article two.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, we'll call Scott I.
Mary I.
Heidi I.
Cliff I.
And article two recommended four zero.
For article three, this is the purchase of the police department cruiser. Like to ask Chief Shartner if he would come forward. I know there were some questions from the board and while he's settling in, the proposed motion is to transfer seventy one thousand dollars from Public Safety Stabilization Fund for the purchase of a police cruiser due to the extensive delays and back orders. This would give us a jump on ordering the cruiser that was originally planned to be ordered at this coming May town meeting.
Correct. Yeah, this is nothing.
Can you move the mic towards you so that you're on? Thank you.
All right, uh, this is nothing additional to what we usually ask for. Uh, right now the, the cruiser I ordered in May is looking to come in around January. Um, been doing this for twenty nine years. Usually we sort of our car in May, it'd be here in July. Um, we've finally caught up with mileage and we're just trying to keep the rotation fresh versus having, uh, worked on this, not a covenant or warranty. Um, so if this gets approved, I don't anticipate this car coming until August, between August and October of twenty five. This isn't like we're going to get approved in December. We're going to have a new car in January. This is all the way out to probably August or October of next year. Right now I'm probably looking at April for a delivery date. Last one was April, the one before was February. And these are all cars we get in, uh, July. So we live cars from July until, um, you know, for six, seven months until we can trade them or, or get rid of them.
Are we still doing new car in, old car out?
Yeah, um, this one I'm going to, uh, keep because Jax's car, I did a spreadsheet. Uh, the car that Jax is in is probably going to end up, um, going on a commission. Uh, if I get this car next August to October, probably the following spring, his car will get on a commission. Then we'll take one of the older cars, uh, which I project will have about sixty thousand miles on it and turn that into Jax's car.
I love how Jax has his own car.
So.
Yeah.
So I, I got a question, chief. Does, does he have a driver's license?
Yeah, yeah.
I signed for him.
Permit. He's got a permit. Yeah, he's got a permit. Yeah.
Yeah, uh, he should. Um, you know, I had a fleet of eight cruisers. I moved it down to seven, uh, a couple of years ago because we had some cars with a lot of mileage on them. And seeing every time we took them off, check engine light would come on. So we, we dropped down cars. Uh, we do have a potential of somebody going to the police academy in January. So we're going to be down a car January through June again. Um, because we have to provide transportation for, uh, the new hires. So, um, yeah, so I mean, at seven, we're, we're limping, um, or at six, I should say we're limping, uh, but like I said, we'll reassess when we get here. Uh, if it gets approved and I get the car, we'll reassess the fleet, see where we're at and make a decision. Um, because technically the car that the fire department got was four months newer than the car we're driving, had less miles on it. But we just rearranged the driving for our car for, so the fire department can get a decent car. Um, so, and I, I imagine two years from now, the fire department is going to probably want to replace that car with a, with a better car. So. And this is a hybrid.
Yep.
The Chevy Blazer just came out, um, was at IACP a couple of weeks ago. Just came out with a brand new Chevy Blazer patrol vehicle. Um, they're just hitting the market. Uh, you know, I'll see how they go in the first six, seven, eight months and they may be our next album here to go, but they are fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty one dollars more.
Didn't you say that you had concerns about there was enough power on the car to do everything that you needed to do?
Chevy Blazer just addressed all that.
Okay.
They just came out and then Ford addressed it with an eight thousand dollar option.
Of course.
So, uh, tho- those, the amperage, it was a twelve volt amperage to, to run the equipment. So, uh, so Chevy has, has adjusted, um, to that and I don't want to be the first. Um, definitely don't want to be the last, but I don't want to be the first to do a trial run to see how they go. Because, you know, you're looking at basically what eighty, eighty six thousand dollars for a trial.
And we need the charging station as well, right?
Yeah, uh, which I talked to, which I thought was more expensive than what it is. Um, the charging station itself is fifteen hundred. It's running the electrical. We have to run electrical to our carport. Um, basically like a dryer and, um, a cord two twenty.
That's not bad.
So, uh, you know, I think we should definitely look in the near future with Green Community. Um, you can buy a double charging port for a fifteen hundred dollars charge point. So, and that gives you like, I think they said like fifty miles per hour of charge to the level two. Yeah, they're up to two hundred and forty miles now. They were like a hundred and eighty, now they're up to two hundred and forty.
How long does that usually last? I mean, Berlin's not a lot of that big.
Uh, well, it's not that big, but our cars do anywhere between sixty and a hundred miles per shift.
Wow. Okay. Mr. Schultz?
All right, recommendation is, the motion is to recommend article three.
I'll second article three.
Right, any further discussion? Right, we'll call Scott I.
Three I.
Heidi I.
Cliff I.
Okay, article three recommended four zero.
Thank you. Any questions from the select board?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Eric. All right, article four is what I'd call a housekeeping item. Um, when the opioid litigation, um, funds started rolling in from the settlements like Purdue and some of those ones that you've heard of now includes many, many companies, Walgreens, CVS, Teva. Um, the initial guidance we received was to put it in an opioid stabilization fund. Well, like many other things, um, DOR has a new recommendation. So their recommendation is to put it, um, into a special revenue fund. And in order for us to change the way that we're dedicating that revenue, we actually have to revoke the acceptance of, um, putting the funds automatically into stabilization without further appropriation as we did um, previous, at a previous town meeting, which was the May first of twenty twenty three town meeting. Um, so this really is a easier way of using the funds and allowing us access to them because as we all know, stabilization requires a two thirds vote of town meeting to be able to access the funds. The state has come out with about a twenty five page manual on how these funds can be used. It's very specific. Um, so this is an easier way for us to be able to actually utilize those funds and get them out into the community.
So minimal work for the accountant?
Yeah.
Mr. Schultz?
All right, the, uh, motion is to recommend article four.
Oh, second motion.
All right, any further discussion? Hey, roll call Scott I.
Heidi I.
Cliff I.
There, article four recommended four zero.
Article five, not a financial article, but amendment of the revolving fund bylaw, doesn't have a dollar impact per se, just allowing, um, wages to be in eligible use for recreation revolving funds, um, retroactive to July one of twenty four, which would allow the recreation committee to use funds that they charge for programs to pay for the counselors who actually run the programs. So just want to make sure there aren't any questions on that. All right. Article six is also a bylaw amendment. Um, it is amending the Community Preservation Act Committee bylaw, which is article, oh, I love Roman numerals, twenty four, section one, thank you, of, uh, the task where my like mild dyslexia comes in, of the town of Berlin general bylaws to remove one of the members, which was from the housing partnership, which is now a defunct, um, committee and to add a member of, from the municipal affordable housing trust. Any questions on that one? Pretty straightforward.
No, but in article five, I was wondering when you were going to fill in the X, Xs for the real article numbers, but then realized that.
It's article twenty.
It was article twenty.
I, I can't tell you how many times I've looked at that and gone, oh my goodness, I have to fill the Xs in. And then I remind myself it's twenty. So I'm right there with you. Um, article seven is a request from the moderator to amend, um, the, uh, electronic voting bylaw to amend article two, section seven of the town of, uh, Berlin general bylaws to add a paragraph at the end to reflect the current use of electronic voting at town meeting. Questions, comments on that one?
No, this will save us thirty seconds at every town meeting going forward.
That we can dispense with the hand count votes that we have to do at the beginning. Correct. Um, article eight, we have not spoken about yet, but, um, I was requested by the select board to put together a recall bylaw. Um, so we probably need to spend a little bit of time on article eight. So this is to authorize the select board to petition the state to enable the recall of elected officials. It would be a special chapter of the town of Berlin's general bylaws. I have had this reviewed, obviously by town council and, um, selected a relatively simple and straightforward method. Um, it requires fifty registered voters to initiate a recall petition by filing with the town clerk. Um, there's a process for how the town clerk would have to go about certifying those names. Um, as, you know, the town clerk is required to do. And then, um, the petition shall be signed by at least ten percent of registered voters or seventy five percent of the average number of voters who have voted in the town elections for the previous three years, whichever is lesser. Um, and then there, this really just outlines process. I see I have section six at the bottom of the page here. I gotta fix that. Um, of how it goes. And then, um, did I go too far ahead? Oh, sorry. Yes, then we have a recall election. Sorry, I forgot kind of the important part there. Um, and so it's a majority of votes passed on the question if it's in the affirmative. And then there's a for removal recall, against removal recall. Um, and then you can also do the portion of addressing the candidate who would receive the highest number of votes um, in the special election to fill the vacancy as well. So it's. So it's a relatively simple one, I didn't want to make it too complicated. Question?
Thank you. Can I ask you a question? Okay, um, I just was wondering if, is this similar to, say, Boylston's?
So this is actually a bylaw that, um, I helped write and worked on. When I was in Leicester, that we took to town meeting and town meeting decided they did not want to recall elected officials. So this was an article that I had worked on there, had town council review it there and bringing it here, I have not looked at Boylston's.
Um, because it might be, it might be an advantage to have them be similar. If, you know, in, in the case that you would be recalling somebody who works for Berlin and Boylston.
Well, this would only be, um, this.
You know, I, I've heard that the, um, that they're very different town to town.
Yep, they, they, they can be.
Yeah.
The school, if you're talking about like a, like something for like a regional school district, they would have to have their own recall bylaw. So it wouldn't really matter if ours is different from Boylston's.
Right, the school board elected official is neither a Berlin or a Boylston, so this wouldn't affect school board.
Correct, just like we found out with town meeting when we.
We're doing this because, I, I was willing to request it, like, we're doing this because someone pointed out the town of Berlin has no recall stuff. And I thought it was important, I thought we should have one. And I would love to ha- put these in place at a point where there is not a act of grumbling out there that we want to try to recall, so.
But I didn't know that, you know, it had been requested.
Yeah, yeah, so at the last, at last, like we're being started, right there, I noticed it wasn't on there and we had talked about it previously. And since May town meetings already tend to be long, if anything, we could just sort of pound out at a fall town meeting, uh, would be worthy of doing. So I asked it to be put on and.
So it wouldn't have, that wouldn't have worked for the, for the regional school anyway?
No, so because they're their own entity, their own municipal entity as well, they're not subject to our bylaws. Because remember, we went through that with the warrant, could, did they have to, if they were gonna have a super town meeting? Did they have to mail a warrant to all residents in Berlin and they don't, because they're not subject to our bylaws?
Okay, so are there any requirements around this? You know, mental capacity, failure to show up for your job, you're just a vile, nasty, evil person, as long as you get. Well, I, I don't know, like if there's certain criteria.
That, there's not a, this particular one I read doesn't have one, and so it could be. Where you part your hair could be the reason why someone decides to do it. Now, they would have to find fifty people to sign a petition to get it to the point where you get a petition to get seventy-five percent of the people in the last election. And so if there really are fifty people who hate the way you part your hair, and then, you know, they, they then got. What would be, let's say we have five or six hundred, and so you, another five hundred people on a petition. Uh, and then it goes to a ballot and somehow a majority of people don't like the way you part your hair, you could be recalled for that. In the process, that's something that is trivial and, and really silly would.
In some cases, sometimes try to make it more difficult. Having that this kind of a bylaw, because they don't want it to be easy.
I think getting.
All the time.
Seventy-five percent of the, of the number, seventy-five percent of the number of the last three town elections, our town elections are now getting. Right, and so you're talking about trying to get five or six hundred signatures in, in the town of Berlin, I think is a, a pretty daunting. I think even if someone had done something horrible, getting five or six hundred signatures, just logistically would take some serious time.
And those, and they have to have their name and address and be willing to be on a public petition as well. So, I mean, that's, it's not the same as when you're saying, I, I'm happy to put somebody on a ballot, this is saying, I want this person removed from office.
The, the cloak of anonymity is gone, and sometimes I think that stops. As well, that you have to stand up, oop, sorry Roger, um, that you have to stand up and say, it is me, or it is I, it is I? Who's the school teacher here? It is I, it is me, just checking for grammar.
But as you pointed out, Scott, you've got three stopping places, you have the initial, then the petition, then the vote. So you've got three stumbling blocks, I think, if you will. And, and as you pointed out, the, we have a lot of voters in Berlin, which is great.
But, when I was playing devil's advocate about, like, maybe we should have reasons, it's just like, then what would those reasons be? And then like, you, people would find a way to shoot hard into those, argue that that's not really correct, and like. I think if you can get that many people in this town to sign a petition that you should be out, then there's probably something there.
Who's signing things? All the time.
Yep.
Uh, you know, I, I don't want to hold up this whole, this whole thing with the FinCom, but it might deserve some additional talk between us.
Talk about a future item, all right, um, Article Nine, prudent investment rule, sounds fun.
The, this is fun, it's, it's prudent, um, if you will. So this is, um, asking the townspeople to accept the provision of mass general law. To basically diversify and broaden the way that the town's trust funds are invested. Uh, this is a somewhat new provision of mass general law in the last couple of years. That, uh, allows municipalities to invest in a manner similar to banks. Um, which can lower investment risk, allow for more flexibility, and subsequently enhance investments and returns. Um, I did add, because I, one of the questions FinCom had was, um, what are the types? Could it be stocks, bonds, mutual funds, and it can be all of the above, E T Fs? And those are far more diversified than what's on the current mass legal list. And, which is a very short list of investments that are infrequently updated. Um, one of the arguments that you hear out there about prudent is that the trust funds could potentially be invested in a quote-unquote risky. Or man- manner than would be allowed on the current list. But because the rule allows for many types of investment. And, um, you know, some of which do contain a higher risk. But when you're looking at it with a trust advisor, as we would have, and as we do have, we have Bartholomew who helps us manage our investments. You know, just like any investments that you have, that you manage, um, you know, you look at your specific goals that you have. And you manage the risk appropriately, so it's really amounts to just an increased opportunity for diversification.
So who would bring this forward? Would it be our treasurer collector? Oh, it'd be us?
Uh, my, well, I'm recommending. But I didn't want to put my name on it.
Right, no, I'm just, I'm, let's just say it passes, um. So, flash forward six months from now, who comes to who to say, oh, look, there's X, Y, Z on the market? And it's got a really good return and we should, that's who I was asking is.
Oh, I got you.
Brings it forward, treasurer, FinCom, us?
So the treasurer has the authority, uh, under mass general law to do any type of investing that is legal. So right now, the treasurer can invest funds as they see appropriate. You can put a policy in place around investments, and I believe the town does have an investment policy right now. So if this were to pass, we would update it to look at prudent, you know, if you wanted to say. There's one thing that came up in one of the discussions I had was, um, do you want to invest in more companies that have a green energy focus? Or, uh, you don't want to invest in companies that do a lot of overseas labor violate, wha- whatever it might be. And that gets a little dicey, but those are all things that you can talk about if this passes, when you implement that policy. But once the select board does implement that policy, the treasurer follows it and can move those funds without further authorization.
Okay.
And so to be clear, that, that if this passes at town meeting.
Yep.
The, nothing changes the town until the select board approves a slightly different policy.
That is correct. And I would like the FinCom to obviously be involved in that discussion as well, um, because I think that would be prudent.
Okay, motion is to recommend Article Nine.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Rule call, Scott, I?
Very I.
Hey, D I.
Cliff, I.
Okay, recommended for zero.
We would really like to strategically bring in some more interest revenue, um, and we're leaving some money on the table without this, so thank you, I think that's great. Um, Article Ten is repurposing the funding for the old fire station roof replacement. Uh, both the capital planning committee, as well as the select board, have voted to demolish the old fire station. And the former rescue building, and this article seeks to repurpose twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. That was set aside to replace the roof at the old fire station. Obviously, that quote that we got to demo was forty-two thousand, I wanted to talk about that later under ARPA. I think we should allocate up to fifty thousand dollars in ARPA, the difference. To, um, make sure that we can fully fund this, because I don't think it would make sense to transfer the funds and only have part of them.
Hey, the motion is to recommend Article Ten.
I'll second.
Right, any other discussion? Right, rule call, Scott, I?
Hey, D I.
Cliff, I.
Okay, Article Ten recommended for zero.
Um, Article Eleven is, is a select board article, um, what it does is, as we've talked about, um, this. It does a, several things, it pushes out the date for the option to purchase Lot Six at River Run. Um, but by one year from December thirty-first of this year to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. It also, um, asks town meeting to take a vote on the ConCom's vote. To modify the conservation restriction to allow public water supply. Um, that's located on the property to provide water for other users, other than just the owner of that property. Um, and residents that, um, were on that land. And also seeks to allow that conservation restriction to be transferred to a third-party entity. Which the ConCom has already indicated they would like to be Sudbury Valley trustees. So that all is rolled up in one, in that article.
Do you think this will make give us just a year? That was my question. Going to be enough time, or are we gonna be bringing this back again?
Should we push it over to, where your last line is, we'll require authorization of the Massachusetts legislature?
Yeah.
Important for us, but is it important for the folks involved?
It is a lengthy process, um, I have been making some headway, um, in trying to get a contact at E E A through Senator Kennedy's office. I'm supposed to actually be getting a call later on this week from somebody from their office, which is great, because I've been trying since, um, July. To get someone to call me back. I am open to doing that, and I think it may make sense. Let me talk to council, if the board would be amenable to pushing that out a year. I can make that change if that seems like it would be amenable to council as well.
If council thinks it's a good idea.
Yeah, but is the board amenable to it if council thinks it's a good idea?
I don't, I don't either. It may not, it may make a few people unhappy, pushing it out more than a year, even eighteen months, you know, or something.
Okay, I will speak to council and I will follow up with you all via email.
Thank you.
And that is not one necessarily for the FinCom. Um, the last one is a financial article, um, we have two affordable housing donation account funds that are out there right now. Um, the amount that's totaled is five hundred and two thousand nine hundred and two dollars, although I just, um, heard this evening. I do have to adjust that amount down slightly, because there is, um, an outstanding invoice for the, uh, ass, uh, Metro West. Housing Coalition that needs to come out of that, so that number will adjust down by that amount, which is less than seven thousand dollars. That's what we allocate annually at town meeting, um, so, but basically it would transfer the funding that's available in these accounts. To the Affordable Housing Trust, which is really where that funding should lie. Um, these funds came from two sources, the first was penalties that developers paid to the town for not developing affordable housing units. As required under our zoning, and the second came from the Highland Commons Development Agreement. So, but it, you know, is appropriate to have that rest under the control of the housing trust as they are tasked with developing affordable housing.
And the housing trust can pay that annual bill going forward?
Yes, they can, they need, and, and that, they would need to, um, and that was one of the, um, stipulations that I had set forth. Because we take money from that account every year and put it into the budget to offset that seven thousand. So they would either discontinue the service or pay for it.
Mr. Schultz?
Right, motion is to recommend Article Twelve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion?
Uh, just a little background, if anybody's got it on the, on the, how much was, came from penalties that developers paid? Anybody know the breakdown on that?
I do, I have that. June, you don't have it handy, do you? Okay, I do have it, if you give me one second. The split is like three eighty-something to, but let me give you the exact amount, I did have it in here.
I'm happy with round thousands, you know, no, I don't go.
I just don't want to give you.
Thank you.
No, I, I appreciate that. Uh, let's see.
Oh, 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 that one.
Sorry, the side conversation Krista and I are having are about the process for signing the pieces of paper in front of us.
And I have a question on that, so.
Taking twenty-five years to open. Have to encourage the computer, you can do it.
Is it, is it just safe to say the larger amount is from penalties, smaller amount from Highland Commons?
Other way around, I believe.
Other way around, okay.
Sorry, I don't know why that, oh, it's, like, it's doing something now, there we go, okay, give me one second. I actually was able to open the Word document now, it's always a good step in the right direction. Go down to the article, so we are talking. Highland Commons was three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and the balance was from the penalties.
I, I have a question about the motion, though, you said this number won't be on there, is there a problem with us approving it? I'm recommending it to you if the number's changing, I.
That's a fair question, um, I would ask if you would approve the, um. The article itself, conceptually, and authorize me to reduce it by the amount of the outstanding invoice.
All right, modification to the motion then, uh, motion to re- recommend Article Four. To, um, transfer a, excuse me, Article Twelve. To transfer the available funds from the Affordable Housing Donation Accounts. To the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. That good, do that work?
With authorization for the T A to adjust to. Make the motion on the floor if they don't want to do it now. Well, no, I think it's just the final number.
It's just, yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, we're just doing.
Or you can change your motion.
Right, because motions are always subject to be changed on the floor, so, and there is that caveat in here.
And it, and it, you know, there's, new information might change how they want to vote on any of these.
So, so procedurally, uh, we have the original motion, and it was seconded. We talked about it in alternate emotion, but we haven't really seconded it, so perhaps we should vote on the first one and just move forward.
Or you could pull it back if you don't want to do it.
It hasn't been seconded, so it's not a thing.
Right, fourteen, okay, I have the amount, um, it's one thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. That is the outstanding invoice, so let me give you the revised amount. So that would be five hundred and one thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty-four. We'll leave the change off, because it was fifty cents, but I don't like to do cents.
So you said it was five zero one, four five four?
Five zero one, four five four.
Okay, start with a new, uh, motion here, uh. Motion to recommend Article Twelve to transfer five hundred and one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. From the Affordable Housing Donation Accounts to the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust.
I'll second that recommendation.
All right, any further discussion, Alice? Okay, rule call, Scott, I?
Hey, D I.
Cliff, I.
The Article Twelve recommended for zero.
And that's it.
So, Krista, my question to you, um, yes. What is the timing for this? So this will go to the constable tomorrow, this will go to the printer tomorrow?
Nope, so the goal is to get this to the printer tomorrow. Nope, so the goal is to get this to the printer tomorrow. The constable will post it fourteen days before town meeting, but it'll go out to the residents likely before then because it'll go to the printer. And he said two to three days, I believe, for it to go out.
So, question on the one that we talked about with River Bridge, about pushing it out until twenty-six. Same thing, we will adjust it on the floor, because if you're gonna talk to town council, uh, how quickly can you move to get it so that it goes out to the printer in time to meet your timelines?
So the, I actually can do it as late as Wednesday, but my goal is to do it tomorrow. And I do have town council, they are on notice and standing by. I was able, I'm able to get her pretty quickly. So I can certainly discuss it with her in the morning. Or the afternoon if she's not available and get that out. But our, that's actually early, so we're not legally obligated to mail it out until three weeks before the town, I believe it's three weeks. Why did I just second guess myself? But we wanna get it out earlier. So my goal would be to get it to the printer tomorrow, if at all possible, if not Wednesday.
Can we adjourn?
I don't know whether before or after adjournment, but I have a question on that article and I don't know if you'd entertain it.
Go ahead.
For, for which one? Article eleven, the one you're talking about right now. Um, there's an awful lot packed into that language, a good deal of which I don't understand and I'm quite familiar with the River Bridge agreement. So I wanted to ask if the Select Board would consider unpacking what's presented in this article. And particularly unpacking the transfer to the nonprofit, which this looks like it's gonna be a multi-year enterprise. If we could take that out of this article on the warrant, I think it might be a little easier for people to comprehend. And also, I think doing it stepwise, I think makes sense. Because, well, I won't go into my background on this, but, but I'll just leave it at that, just that question.
I can definitely answer that. The whole reason we have to push it out a year is because of the conservation restriction. And it's a little bit confusing and I figured it was easier to probably verbally explain it on town meeting floor. There's a conservation restriction on the property. The town cannot take ownership of that property until the conservation restriction is transferred to a third party or it extinguishes upon the town taking ownership. And we do not wanna lose that conservation restriction. So we have to transfer it to a third party. However, the transfer of it triggers what's known as an Article ninety-seven process, which requires state review and sign-off. It is a nasty, onerous, complicated process that we were hoping we wouldn't have to get into. But these are recent regulations that the state has updated with regard to Article ninety-seven to make it nearly impossible to transfer conservation land. So that's, and the sale and closing of the property is tied to the date of that is tied to the transfer of property, which is why we can't buy the property until the CR is transferred off of the land.
So the penalty, if we don't do this, is that it is extinguished.
Correct.
Well, can it be recreated after it's been extinguished?
No.
And we're not allowed to extinguish it, so we as a town can't take ownership of it. So the other option is, Riverwood gets to keep the land forever.
Correct. And we asked that question, because Scott, Scott's on your, on your wavelength. He asked the same question, could we recreate it either?
We might need a little more clarity, uh, about all of this. Okay, thank you. Thanks for picking.
Would it be helpful if it just wasn't in the language here? And was just explained on the floor? Or does it matter?
Perhaps.
Well, I also have two really fun memos on it that I'd be happy to send out to the FinCom that helps explain it a little bit more too. Because I, I know you guys need some bedtime reading.
Well, but it's also, I think, I, Mary's point is that how we make sure this, this, people have the information to allow it to pass.
Correct. So because it's a description and it has, it's not impacted by, you know, any, I mean, if you'd like me to work on trying to make this a little bit clearer tomorrow, I could.
As long as it doesn't delay getting it out, because I'm always one who thinks it should be in the mail more than thirty days before the meeting and we're.
Okay, so can we table our discussion? Scott, did you wanna call your meeting?
Um, motion to adjourn the Finance Committee meeting.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Seven forty-five, thank you so much for coming. Love your hat. I do, really love your hat. All right. Look at that, almost right on time. So, gonna have a chat with the, regarding the EV charging station. So, Mr. Peter, come on down.
Do you want me to start with the kind of the genesis of the conversation?
Yeah, first, let me tell. Let me tell you the cringe, but she apologizes. So you're stuck with me. That's all right.
Happy to have you. All right, so one of the things that I know the board talked about when this came forward was community outreach. And one of the things that I did agree to was to take a copy of the plans to the Complete Streets meeting because I happened to have all of the downtown stakeholders there at that meeting. And I, I was actually a little surprised, but there were many concerns that were raised. And the first thing was, why aren't we doing it at the town hall? It's much more well-lit. There were concerns about noise issues, people talking on cellphones in, in the evening. Uh, keeping the sort of historic nature of the center with the Bullard House being there and the eighteen seventy Town Hall being there. The, and the number of limited parking spaces that are there as well. So I know one of the things we had talked about was putting in the grant, but if there was ending up being opposition to it, not moving forward with it. And, you know, I would hate to see that opportunity, you know, go awry if we know right away that there's vocal opposition to having it in the downtown area. And so my recommendation to the chair was, could we have that discussion about potentially putting it somewhere else before we put in that application? Because it seemed like if you're going to have an outcry of residents in the downtown area who don't want it there and they're coming to the Select Board saying, no, we don't want it there, then that might kill the grant. And I don't wanna see that happen.
And Scott, before you ask, the folks that were there, there, there was a resident, they were members from Historical, Nineteen Carter Highway, uh, the General Store, First Parish Church, and our Public Safety. So it was a pretty broad audience that was there. I, I think we should go back to having it be here. But I would prefer that they be up front, which is where they were originally going to be.
Where do you mean by up front? Like out by the street?
Like, but by, I think it was gonna be by the mailboxes. But then again. Mailbox, the big mailbox.
Oh, the one over here?
Yes.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yes.
Right, but you also have to look at the parking requirement for ADA, where they need, and there, if you put it by the mailbox, you've got the sidewalk.
Well, it doesn't have to be there, but I don't want, I don't think it should be down behind. That's, that was the other option, wasn't it?
I, I don't know that there was a plan
There wasn't.
that, that I've seen for here.
Oh, I thought I had read that it would be at this building down behind.
No, I don't think.
Because that's not visible, that's not, you know.
I, so the genesis kind of of this was, you know, when I started, I was kind of asking the Energy Committee, like, you know, I'm happy to help, you know, work on this grant. Where do you guys want it? And there was sort of kind of back and forth. And then from what I understand, you know, Corinne and the Economic Development Committee came forward with this plan and it was endorsed by the Energy Committee. So there was just that one site that was mapped out. I, I haven't seen anything mapped out for here, where, where it would go.
Years ago, it was talked about by the mailboxes.
Yeah, was, wasn't it by the mailbox?
That's where they had originally wanted it.
And that was, I thought maybe there was something in writing or something.
No.
Because I could vis- visualize it.
Yeah, they was talking about it, but I don't think that it ever went through to fruition. And I think the costs at that time were extremely prohibitive because as people started pecking through it, it was, oh, look, here's a fee. Oh, look, here's another fee. Oh, look, here's another fee.
This wasn't the grants probably that there, there is now.
Yep, so we just kinda.
Yeah, but, but that, I thought that that was a pretty good idea, though, to have them be.
Out in the front somewhere.
Yeah.
Peter, was the intent of this grant to improve economic development and economic activity in the town of Berlin? And Peter, how many businesses and nonprofits are based in this building?
As far as I know, zero. This is an, as, as Corinne wrote in her email to at least the two of you, this is an economic development initiative. And if it's here, it's gonna serve the purposes of the staff.
No, not necessarily. I didn't know there was any over at the mall.
Yeah, but still, it's gonna be the staff that.
Once they find out, they'll use them.
And, and do what when they're using them? Like, what business are they going to support? What extra taxes are they gonna get in this town if they come to this building and charge their cars here?
They'll come and visit Kristen.
And always.
I mean, I'll, I'll get free electricity while I sit here at Select Board meetings, but I don't think that's the purpose of trying to have electric car ch- charging stations in this town.
Well, it might be for some people.
I'm used to seeing them at public buildings, actually. So that, that is not uncommon for me because if people are coming to pay taxes or do business or, or things of that nature. But I understand the economic development component of it too. I honestly have not jumped on board one way or the other with this because I, I don't have a horse in the race. I just wanna make sure that where it's put is amenable to the greatest number of parties in town. And so I, I just wanted to foster that discussion here.
Aren't there competing interests, logical place to put it versus uh, community feelings?
Say that again.
Community input, the neighbors versus logical place to put it. Those are two competing interests. It's for the three of you to decide which, which trumps which. Sorry.
No, you, you said it much, actually more articulately than I did. I, it's really a policy decision. And that's why it's, it's not for, for me to, to say. I just wanted to bring those concerns forward to the board.
I mean, if, if hearing from the businesses and the, and the community groups in the center of town, they don't believe this will add to bringing people there, then, then it doesn't serve its purpose and we should just withdraw the grant. I, I, I do not support
That's fine with me.
Economic development grant for this building. This building does not generate economic development for this town.
Well, but if you take away that part of it, it may be convenient for some.
But, but the purpose of the grant is economic development.
Two of them.
Right, but it's still economic development. In ten years owning electric car, I have only once in my life gone to a public building for charging. And it was only because I had to on that particular ride and I didn't get out of the car the entire time I was charging. I generally look for businesses and places that have electric charging stations. And when I am charging, buy things from those stores. I have to go in there and let them know that I'm there because there's a charger there. Now, we don't do this for me, but that either we're doing something to, to electrify it or we just don't do it.
But let's be real too, you put it in the center of town, the general store closes at seven, earlier on a Sunday. They're not gonna go skipping into Nineteen Carter, if Nineteen Carter's closed. They're not going into a church. Library has hours, so what money are you drawing into the town?
Every business I've been to has hours. There's, there's not places that are open twenty-four. You don't need to have an electric car. The, the Solman Hall Mall is not open twenty-four seven, and they thought it added economic development by having chargers there.
See happen?
I would like to see chargers in the center of town, especially if they don't cost the town any money. But if it's going to be that contentious, the people in the center of town, well, they can add it, and if, then we just withdraw it.
So, Peg mentioned that there was a broad spectrum of people at the meeting. I know highway, fire, police are supportive of this. I think neighbors are of the sort that say, not in my backyard. They're fearful of lots. And I can't imagine that we're gonna have a lot of radio playing, smoking, weed-smoking people charging their cars. I just don't, it's just not.
Well, they wouldn't be doing it if it was in this parking lot, probably.
I think it was more noise from people talking on cellphones, not necessarily doing.
Well, and people hanging around too. I mean, that was it. And plus.
They're gonna be productive, whatever they're doing.
Right, I mean, I think too that people, we're, we're looking at the aesthetics of it, you know, with Complete Streets, you wanted, you know, the hometown of it, and all of a sudden you've got insert how many.
Two cars.
Understood, but unfortunately, you know, we have a participant there, it was there. It was not well-received at all. I would love to see, I don't have a, a electric car, but I would love to see them in town. But we also have to weigh the public input as well, with all those folks that came forth. And it just wasn't one person that said no. It pretty much was around the table.
Well, and for, oh, sorry.
Krista, what was the wha- what about our vehicles?
Well, I was just gonna say, for argument's sake, there, there is a public benefit to charging stations that, that is in addition to a potential economic development benefit in that, you know, you're providing a service to the public as well. So I see if you, if you were to do it here, you are providing a service not only to the residents, but you're also providing stations that potentially could be used for future electric vehicles for police and fire. So, there's that.
And that's why I think originally it may have been discussed to have it here. I don't think it was for economic development.
The grant specifically is for economic development. I believe an electric car charging station, it is a public service. It would help us buy more electric vehicles. I think it's like, but the purpose of this grant was economic development. We're not gonna do economic development with an economic development grant that we should just withdraw.
I didn't think National Grid limited it to economic development.
I don't think they limited it, but they encouraged it, or that was the motive behind it. Uh, we'd have to clarify that, but our mission is E, is economic development. The EDC.
National Grid is just giving rebates for installing the.
And, you know, as Chief Sardner said earlier this evening, he's gonna get his, uh, extension cord being cloaked up and plug it in. That's, that's the way that the fire and police will handle it. For not seventy thousand a piece, for a hundred dollars a piece, or five hundred dollars a piece, or a thousand dollars.
So, what if, what if you discussed it with Public Safety, Krista, to see how much gauge their interest?
Oh, they were very interested initially in having it here when I talked to them. And then Chief did say tonight he had looked into it a little bit more. And there is the option of doing something cheaper, so.
I think it really was just for the vehicles here, because then we kept thinking, well, there might be a way to, you know, let, put the public use it and make some money. But that, that's a conversation I seem to remember.
I mean, I do see our walkability improving with Complete Streets, and I would love to see us go the next step and improve that intersection. Now, I'm like disoriented over here. Thank you, thank you, Sue. She's my compass tonight. Improve that intersection so you could actually have that walkability, which I think would improve use if you're talking about, you know, using it for downtown businesses. But that's another Complete Streets grant. So that's a ways down the road.
Right, and you also have to look at how the streets are gonna go. Because, you know, is it one way, one, one way up one road, one way down the other road, two ways up? How are people gonna know if, and again, let's just pretend that Woodward comes this way, so they, where am I? So, so the Complete Streets.
Did you discuss the Complete Streets with this group?
That was the whole point of the, yeah, that was the whole point of.
And how did they feel about that?
They were fine with Complete Streets, but it was, you know, the discussion of what do you do with the roads? Do you make it like we had before where it was, what, one way coming this way down Woodward, one way going up?
We, we did that.
That road is.
Nobody liked it.
Well, there was discussion that. So now if you put a charging station there with the street that's meant to go this way, but people don't understand and they're pulling in and causing issues that way. So that's just where the conundrum came out of. I don't think that the people were necessarily not in favor of a charging station. They were just not in favor of having it in the middle of town. That they would prefer for safety's sake to have it here, where there is generally always somebody here.
Eric told me that traffic, police and fire were for this. Did they change their position?
I believe they're for it. I, I, I don't, I will not answer for him, and I cannot answer for him.
So there's somebody in the, in the, in the room that, that was there?
Yeah, uh, both chiefs.
No, 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 somebody right now that we could shout.
Peg, Peg, you were at that meeting.
And I was at that meeting, yeah.
Debbie, what, what's your input? What can you add?
Eric was in favor of having them here. He spoke quite strongly against having them in the center of town.
He was concerned about the ADA requirement. Now that's coming back, the ADA concerns with the new changing regulations.
Correct.
Which, by the way, CMR PC sent an email that they have come out.
Okay.
Heard about space needed around it and the way that the streets are third corbed downtown. It would take up a lot of parking in the little town where we try to maximize.
Right. And there was.
Big streets and then the biking.
Right.
And sidewalk.
And there were concerns from the church that not to put it on the corner, but now if you put it there, you would take up church property. So that's, I mean, it was nice to have all these folks that were there because all these comments were coming out that either no one had thought of or no one had asked, or no one brought them forward. So the church, I don't think, was initially very interested in losing any part of the land, whether it was for parking sidewalks or even a EV station.
Well, the other challenge, thing that was brought up, I think, at the meeting was that this is at a very far from the center of town.
Right.
It's like a block.
Mm hmm. Abby, would you mind coming forward if that's okay through the chair so that you could be heard?
There you go. Have a seat over there.
Yeah, just because you can't, no one can hear you from the audience.
Just remembering the meeting, sharing the meeting.
Share with.
Um, I think that was another factor that came up was um it was a complete streets meeting. So we were talking about how to make it easier to navigate in the center of town. We talked about the one ways. We talked about sidewalks. We talked about safety. Um Eric and Chief Mike, Chief Mike were very safety oriented, of course. And um and I think the general opinion was that people would definitely park here and walk into the center. That's not that far. A problem.
Yeah.
Uh perception is everything. It's it wants you sort of figure out that you can walk that those whatever hundred yards. Um that it would be, and they they just felt it would be safer. I think that ADA thing was was a clincher that it's like we have to leave all this space around and then we'll be there to help people. That's my memory of the meeting.
So where would you go? I'm I'm a little confused where you would put those chargers here. In front, we get it. Mailboxes are out of the question, I think.
I don't know. Maybe you put them where the cruisers park now.
It has to be close enough to the building so that you could run the electrical. I know that. We did it up against the buildings.
Yeah.
When we did it in Leicester at the library and the town hall. So does need to be near. It can't be like in the back of a parking lot.
It's I think it would it would skew the numbers. If you, you know, the concrete and not a telephone pole right there, that's skewed the numbers in my opinion.
Skew the numbers in terms of.
Make it more costly.
I mean, I know that it it could. I I've seen these grants pay for the electrical going into a building before. Um.
I'm sure they'll pay for it. It's just that it'll be more cost, the total cost will increase and the grant won't cover it. But you know, that's that's secondary is where you want it. You want to skip it? You want to have it this building? You want to go elsewhere? It's up to the board.
Is it you who's doing the grant? Who's doing the grant?
Red and me.
Mm hmm. I just thought rather than.
It becomes a town municipal project, then it's not us.
Right.
They'll probably be you.
I'd probably have to work with then with the energy committee on it. Um to see if, you know, they'd be interested in doing that. I I just know that the funding's out there, that it could be used here. And, you know, if we wanted to access that funding and not, you know, leave it on the table, that's why I wanted to have that discussion.
Honestly, I'm fine with it being here.
Me too.
So then do you continue to go forth with the grant?
It's here because it's not an economic development condition.
Well, it is, you know. Because you have to walk to the general store. Is that it?
Yeah, well.
What it says there in the center of town, just the general store and the lumber store and the bank. Well, there isn't going to be, I mean, it's hard enough to find a place to park in the center.
But I I believe independent committees and bodies could choose what they want to work on and not want to work on. And I believe the chair of the EDC has let it clear that if it's not in the center of town, that he might not be the person working on the grant.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. If that's your decision, do you need to take it back to your committee and ask?
I will.
Okay.
But in the meantime, you're inclined to do it here, I would proceed here. You know, why?
No, I mean, that's great, but that's just trying to figure out who is available. And, you know, who keeps track of this? And when do you start it with everything that's going on? So that's all. Um in terms of priority, where does it fall? Thank you, Abby.
So may I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Um so i- it it sounds like this is, there isn't the interest, as Scott was saying, or necessarily fits with the charge of the Economic Development Committee. So um if that's the case and the will of the board is to not have it in the downtown, then I think the next step would be for probably me to approach the Energy Committee and engage their interest in working with me to try to put in an application to do it here.
That sounds fine.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. And the next energy meeting is canceled.
Oh, it got canceled? I did not know.
Yeah, I just looked up my government, my town government, and it says canceled for tomorrow because you have two of the members that are voting people.
Oh, okay.
Voting day.
That's right.
Mm hmm. Yeah. All right.
I forgot.
Didn't forget better.
I mean, Peter, I appreciate everything that you and Corinne did, you know, on this. But uh you know, Kristen and I wanted you to come and hear and thank you, Abby, for your input as well that um I think if you had gone out and done the public input, probably would have been just as shocked as we were um to hear an entire room go, no.
Yeah, it was it was over overwhelming. I was surprised. I I didn't anticipate that. Um but it it does highlight, you know, the importance of of doing, I think, that public outreach. Um, you know, upfront.
I think when we had the gas line coming through here, everybody was supposed to, it was in their backyard. I think it's just not in my backyard.
Well, like, people don't like change either.
Not my center of town.
I mean, when we did those one-way.
Yeah.
Roads, people didn't like that either. All right, well, we'll figure out the next energy meeting and talk to them and go from there. But again, uh please thank Corinne for all her time and all your time that you've permitted us.
Anytime.
Okay. All right.
Good night.
Safe right home.
Thanks.
All right. So while Abby is here, is there anything that we can move on the agenda to take care of?
It's the next item.
I think it's the next item, yeah.
Okay.
So rather than launch into my spiel about what we have left for ARPA money, let's talk about Abby's um change request. I already briefed them that we got the one quote for thirty eight thousand dollars. Um we did reach back out to Ramos to find out why they did not bid. They don't have any administrative staff. So unfortunately, when we have to put together a procurement package that requires a fuller response, they didn't have the capacity to do it. However, they could do it on a smaller scale, just the interior staircase. And then you had a proposal to do a few other items. And I think there were some questions about instead of carpeting on the interior stairs, could you finish them? Or refinish them, right?
Refinish them. Okay. I I believe Harvard's um town hall has no carpeting and it's been refinished and it looks gorgeous. At least the last time I was there.
Okay.
So I didn't know if that was a possibility. It might be less expensive than carpeting. Right, right. So um well, I'll just give you a little quick history. So um in twenty twelve, we went through this whole process of what to do with those stairs. And it sort of followed the uh slipping and falling of a number of people. So what happens is, I don't know what, I don't know Harvard's situation, but in our situation, as you know, you come in and when it's snowy or rainy or your feet are wet and you go right up the stairs and it it gets, it's wet and slippery.
Yeah.
So we uh looked at, considered, you know, those runners, those pads that you just stick on, right? Um but we talked it through, talked to a whole bunch of people and figured out that the runners would be great. So we approved that and you approved it, everybody approved it. And we installed them. We installed the runner in all the stairs, the back stairs, inside and the spiral stair. Um and then mysteriously, we don't know how that happened, but somebody ripped them out from the front stairs. So that was very annoying to us because of the danger factor. And and so, you know, we don't know who did it. But then they replaced them with these things that you stick on and now they're coming off. And so they're a trip hazard. So now people are using duct tape. And so it's just not good. So we're just recommending that we go back to what we'd already thought through and worked successfully for from twenty twelve till twenty nineteen or twenty, when somebody worked it out. So was this, these were just flat pieces that went on top the stair? So what we had installed, which is what we're proposing to reinstall, is a runner that is tacked out.
Yeah.
Goes like goes up in.
So okay, both the front and the top.
Yeah, it's perfect because, you know, any wetness or snow that's on your feet, you know, there's, you're always trudging in there with snow, like in the winter. It just absorbed right in there. So there's, there was no more falling. It was really quite scary before, you know, we had so many people in there for.
I don't know what Harvard does, but.
Yeah, I don't, I wonder what they do.
I, when I was there, it wasn't wet out, so.
Yeah. Maybe it's not a public, does it have a public space at the top?
Yeah.
Um like a big room.
Had our NVRDD meetings there.
Because it looked gorgeous if it's just wood, but it's, I I just would not. I just thought I saw that would fall. I don't want to have it happen again.
Yeah.
So you're asking for fifteen thousand? Well, you guys had approved fifteen thousand to to do the painting. And you'd voted to use the ARPA money. So so when that big quote came in, the committee was like,
Oops.
That's not going to work. But we really have in mind to to get that building back up and running to previous pre-COVID levels. And I think Saunders is doing a good job of of sort of scheduling things and doing, you know, responding to people that that apply. But we really want to push the marketing and get private rentals in there. And then we've got a lot of overflow from nineteen Carter. We keep shoving it over. So but it's just not quite ready, you know, it the painting and that, that especially the stairway. So we were like, okay, how about if we just have Ramos do the stairway? Painting the curve, that's just been bothersome for years. And this carpeting, so that brings us, that's seventy five hundred, which is under the ten thousand, which is the requirement. And the twenty five hundred is carpeting, it's a whole separate thing, right? So that's under ten. And then if we could just keep the five for all other, and the building has not been maintained. There's windows that are broken. There's windows that don't open. There's, you know, there's the back door that doesn't shut right and by faith side. So if we could just just keep that money for us to use to fix it, to get it a little bit back up. And it's not everything, but it's.
Would that have to be itemized as far as? Yeah, the one thing I was going to say is either you have to make sure you spend it by December thirty first. Or, I mean, you go on a little spending spree. Or um we you would have to itemize it and we would have to just obligate it under um a an an agreement, basically, with the between the select board and the eighteen seventy committee, because ARPA funding has gotten fun.
Okay.
And um we have to have all funds obligated by the end of the calendar year, which means we would ha- have to enter into an agreement.
Okay.
So sooner is better.
You're still looking just for fifteen, not for the thirty eight, correct? Correct. So we scratched the thirty eight because I think we could do better, better use of that money that you've allocated. And we just want to get this place going. So um I'd be happy to talk to the committee. I think that we have the seventy five from Ramos. We can get them to write it up officially. Um I have it in writing, but it's my writing because of their words.
And an insurance as a dish, insuring town.
All of that. Uh the grays carpet, I have the quote already, so you have that. And then I can uh um itemize with Fred probably um the other work that needs to get done.
Oh, and one thing that does count as being obligated is signing a um proposal or a purchase order, too. So we if we can at least, even if they can't do the work by December thirty first, if we can enter into some type of agreement and you and I can discuss that.
Okay, that'd be great. Yeah, I'd love to get that back door. They they put Velcro on it to keep it shut. I'll do a lot of work with that. Duct tape, Velcro. That's that's where I would, I mean, I'll, I won't decide everything myself, but I would, I would say let's just get the building doors. Well, there's a safety aspect, too, that you have to look at that. You don't want somebody realizing jiggle, jiggle, jiggle. Right, safety, the doors, the stairs, you know, if we're going to use that building a lot, which we would like to return to those pre-COVID numbers, then we just want to have it snug.
But since the original fifteen K was allocated for interior painting by the board, obviously, this is a change. So that's why it's back before you.
Okay. So you're looking for a motion to talk about how the fifteen, same fifteen thousand will be reallocated to do different jobs?
Okay.
The the spreadsheet does show that of the fifteen thousand, fifty six hundred has already been spent. Do you know what has been spent on?
Fifty six hundred has been spent.
Project twenty one, interior painting, final appropriation fifteen thousand, ex- funds expended five thousand, six hundred and seventy six dollars for nine thousand, three hundred and twenty four left, according to the spreadsheet in the board packet.
Let me take a look at that. That sounds like potential error in that. Wow. Yep, I'm sorry. I don't know how that ended up in there. That's not correct. You haven't expended any funding yet. I I apologize. That's an error on my, on my part.
That's fine. I just, I wanted to make sure that we're not about to spend, commit fifteen thousand when five thousand's already been spent.
No, I, sorry.
Better answer is the typo on the spreadsheet, because that's easy.
Yeah, it's a spreadsheet typo. Yes.
Thank you, Scott. So can I get a motion?
I would gladly move to to uh reallocate the fifteen thousand to those three smaller projects.
Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Um I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Sebby.
We'll be in touch.
Okay. All right, so intermunicipal agreements.
Yes, so I have them with council right now. Looking at them, we may or may not have to do a fourth, depending on what's going on here with eighteen seventy. Um the good news is I was able to steal a template. So that's a good thing. I'm just making sure because it did come from another community that it meets all of the things because I didn't come from council.
Okay.
And um what we have left, and fortun- fortunately, the typo on my spreadsheet does not impact what we've appropriated, uh not appropriated, rather, which is thirty five thousand. So the request I have for you tonight would be to bring the total um allocated for the demo of those two buildings to fifty thousand. We did have a quote that was just under forty three, but that quote's already a few months old. And by the time we go to do it in the spring, it could be more. And again, as you know, we can shift money between projects once the money's been appropriated. So I would be asking for twenty one thousand, five hundred to match the twenty eight thousand, five hundred from the old fire station roof funding to bring that total to fifty thousand for demo of rescue building and old fire station building.
And so that would be a new project twenty two. We're not adding to anything that's currently on the list.
That is correct.
Okay, I I'm sorry. I'm playing catch up here. I think I missed something.
So we talked about, so we've got thirty five thousand, seven hundred and twenty three dollars and fifteen cents. If you look at the green line down at the bottom, funds remaining to be appropriated.
Yep.
So we need to appropriate those funds or we lose them.
Okay.
Um so my recommendation is right now to take twenty one thousand, five hundred of those funds and put them towards the cost for demolition of the two buildings over here. Because while we are re- asking town meeting to reallocate the twenty eight thousand, five hundred that was for the fire station roof and reallocate that for demo, the quote we got was almost forty three thousand dollars for demo. So even if town meeting approves that, we still don't have enough.
And that's for both buildings?
That's for both buildings.
Okay.
And I'm recommending that we round, that we round that up to fifty.
But they have a buffer.
Yep.
Because I don't want to.
What were we talking about intermunicipal agreements for?
So for anything that can't be um under contract with a contractor by the end of December, I have to do an interagency agreement between the select board and say the rec committee for um the playground for eighteen seventy, if they can't get everything under contract for the work that they're doing.
Yeah.
For Bullard, um for the drainage that we're doing in eighteen seventy and Bullard. And there's a fourth one.
Well, you have it here on the.
Public safety renovation.
Public safety, I get it. I get it. I just didn't know who it was between.
So it's between the select board and those departments.
Right here. The status column of the white line.
Need interrupt, you need, need interagency.
Interagency.
Yes.
Right. So they're all there.
Thinking intermunicipal. That's one of those tricky new little things that we can do to make sure our ARPA funding is. That's one of those tricky new little things that we can do to make sure our ARPA funding is obligated in accordance with the. U S Department of Treasury's definition of obligation of funds.
Right, so it does say you're municipal here.
Can I get a, a motion for the twenty-one thousand for the demo of the buildings?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Twenty-one five, if you could, I'm sorry.
All right.
Twenty-one five, that's what I said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. Okay. Oh, okay, I thought I.
I'm adjusting reality.
Oh, that's paid. Why not?
All right, so the motion is on the table uh, for twenty-one five to be taken out of the remaining thirty-five thousand ARPA funds. To assist in the demolition of two town hall buildings. Uh, second in motion, all in favor?
Aye.
So that leaves us with peg math.
Fourteen.
Thank you.
So I would really love to have a little bit more of a buffer on material costs for the public safety second floor reno.
Yep.
Okay, because costs are going up constantly as we all know. So I would love to appropriate the rest of the funding for that.
My only concern on that is that after December thirty-first, we can still move things between projects. And that we don't potentially have a line to do anything on the facility study that we can move extra things into if we had extra money on those lines.
That was gonna be my other um, suggestion. But I can tell you, I worked with Fred on capital and it does make sense to go in by building libraries doing their thing, eighteen seventy's doing theirs. Um, I, I, I think we'd have to have a fairly specific scope and fourteen thousand isn't gonna get us too far.
No, I, I don't think so. I, I, matter of fact, I would put ten grand to the public safety second floor renovation and put a four grand to. Pick something from the public safety study. Uh, that is already completed, that has already been completed to, to do that. And so I think it's specific enough because it is an outside study that we actually used ARPA money to fund.
Okay.
Uh, and a list, and you're right, it's the whole list, especially if you have the five-year plan is almost a million dollars. But that we could find something from it. And if some of these other projects went under, we could potentially pick something bigger from that list. And if some of those projects go over, we could just decide we're not gonna do that because they already have some things going from capital planning and to town meeting.
Okay. And yeah, let me see how specific we have to get. If I can take the first one to three years like I had.
Right.
Because right off the bat, you've got twenty-five that they need for the second retaining wall, the transfer station that Fred can't do this year. So.
Or, I mean, if it has to be even more specific, just say from the one to three-year plan for this building, I'm sure there is. Twenty to thirty to fifty thousand dollars that might be needed in this building somewhere. And you know, you have the AC that could end up running more than it's already budgeted. We have other projects underway. And, and I, I'm kind of hoping at the end of the day, we, we, well, I'd like to do something from that study, but that. That if we had a need in one of these other projects that we did suddenly die because we don't have four or five thousand dollars to sort of get it past the finish line.
I, I like that because that gives us options.
Yeah, cause there really isn't anything on that list for current that that amount of money is gonna cover.
Right.
You need, you need another couple decimal places and another comma.
Yep. Uh, which is why I wouldn't spend time trying to figure out what the one project we're gonna try to do. I said, I, I really think this is a, a, allows us, it's a flexibility bucket is what I'm trying to get us. And so I'd like to then, uh, I think the motion would be that I put uh, uh, ten thousand dollars into adding to the. Uh, project twelve, public safety, second floor renovation. And then a, a new project twenty-three, which would be, and you can work on the wording, but uh, uh, a, a project from the public safety study. Um, uh, to, to find something there to do.
Well, and don't forget too, I mean, where some of that money could be used, where they talk about, we need light bulbs, we need windows, we need caulking.
Right, I was gonna say, it could, and, and eighteen seventy town hall is on the, the public safety site. So it doesn't stop us from adding more to that project. Either the specific project they've already outlined or letting them do a few more things that put that building into a better shape.
You were gonna say something, Kristen, cause I saw you, I saw your face as I was going down that road.
Yeah, I, I actually think we could say to implement recommendations from the facility study for years one to three, or zero to three. Uh, cause there was a year zero. Um, and I'm gonna see if that's specific enough. Cause then we have options, lots of options.
I mean, because I went through and like the items to repair, it's, it's um, you know, insert building name here. Has improper caulking and weather stripping.
Right.
Catch holes with foam insulation. Um, inspect the vents, inspect the windows. So that four grand-ish.
Yep.
Easy.
Easy. And then if for some reason, you know, public safety comes in under or Bullard comes in under or whatever, then you shift it over to that project.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so the motion on the table is for out of the fourteen thousand dollar ARPA money balance, ten thousand to be allocated to the project safety um, for. Public safety for the second floor build out and then the remaining four thousand to be used somehow with the um, building assessment allocation. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any further discussion? Nope. All right, let's move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Boom, chuck a look. So Kristen, will you update that lovely spreadsheet?
I sure will, and I'll fix the, I'll fix the mirror as well. Thank you for pointing that out.
All right, so we are moving into new business. Uh, first up on the list. Is the consideration of the FY twenty-six cost of living increase and level spending budget.
All right, so I am, I am honestly hesitant to do much right now. Um, but I do believe that folks should still get a COLA. Because when you look at um, where we're headed and even though things have leveled off from COVID. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of data with regard to the CPI. Which of course now my computer is going slow and not opening again. Sorry, give me one second. Um, I believe the past twelve months, we were at three point four percent. Um, which is up from three percent in the previous twelve months, but down from what we were seeing during the COVID years. Which were hovering around um, more like the six to eight percent. So three percent per year is around where we were seeing in the pre-COVID years. Um, so the, yeah, so we had an eight point seven percent increase in twenty-two. And a five point nine percent increase in twenty-one during COVID, but that followed nearly nine years of below three percent increases to this, to the consumer price index. So, you know, we're up a little bit over last year with three point four um, over three point oh.
What are most people giving?
So it's hard to say at this point. Um, we have had a spreadsheet go around between the towns. A lot of them don't fill it out yet. But the ones that have are around two, which is different than what we saw last year. Last year, there were.
Who increases? No, I mean, who, who are, whose increases?
Uh, COLAs from other towns.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep, so they, they're, we're looking at around two um, for the ones that have self-reported and what they're looking at. Um, which is better than last year because we were a little low, I think, last year, even though um, I would have liked to give more. You know, we did do some market adjustments.
Was it two and a half last year?
We did two last year and two and a half the year before.
Okay.
So I would like to do two um, and stick with that for right now in a level spending budget. And I am just concerned because. As we all know, FY twenty-five was another tough budget year. Um, we increased our tax levy by almost five percent in uh, twenty-five. And we did it by four percent in twenty-four. So this was done by using our excess levy capacity. Obviously, that continues to decrease over time. So when I started um, working on the FY twenty-four budget. We had about one point nine million in excess levy and we're down to about one point two. So that goes quickly and then you're in really what comes down to an override situation, right? So this is what happens and it's happening across the state.
Mm hmm.
Um, you know, that utilization of excess levy capacity obviously increases taxes as we've talked about. Beyond the expected or typical two and a half percent. Um, and it's unsustainable as a long-term approach um, due to that limited capacity. We've also been relying on the availability of public safety. That didn't work um, because we did need to look at the school funding. But um, this is unsustainable as some of these funds have a sunset date. So we need to look again at trying to get wages off of those public safety mitigation funds and use it for one-time revenues like equipment. Um, a new challenge we're looking at is um, decreasing new growth. Um, which actually is coming in lower for twenty-five than we even anticipated, which is concerning. So I'm going to have to very conservatively, conservatively estimate new growth for twenty-six. Um, we're also gonna see significant adjustments in property revaluations, uh, property values. Um, and people applying for abatements because we're doing the five-year revow. So we're gonna have to put more money in overlay to potentially cover those abatements. So again, you know, rising education costs, commercial devaluation. It all kind of ties together into a rather gloomy picture, um, which I wish I didn't have to give. But as a result of that, I would really like to see everybody do level spending. Obviously, there are non-discretionary items that are gonna go up, but there needs to be justification from those on behalf of the departments. Um, and you know, we all know, and this is my June's favorite, like estimate, estimate, estimate. Um, but looking at, you know, what we projected during last year's budget process. You're looking at the average single-family home tax bill when we're able to get them out this year of going up by between six fifty to seven hundred dollars. Based on that five percent raise and appropriate um, number that we had to do. So we're also looking at the possibility of shifting to a single tax rate after the revow. Um, there's just a number of challenges that we're facing. So kind of keeping all of that in mind as a general overview. This is my recommendation. The um, personnel committee, also I think a little grudgingly um, would have liked to give more. But they do understand the financial realities um, and did back the um, recommendation that I had made to do a two percent right now. Um, and so I'm asking if the select board will back it.
Make a motion.
Okay, I'll stop. Please. Okay.
Um, I'll make a motion to um, approve the FY twenty-six COLA at two percent and the level spending budget.
Second.
Uh, any other questions?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I appreciate Kristen, all those details because you know what? They're gonna have to come out. So people need to start hearing them now and start hearing them often that it's not gonna be fun.
Yeah.
And, and can, I assume that you'll be writing a letter to everyone about this?
Yes, so this is actually from the draft budget memo that goes out.
Okay.
As part of the budget package.
Have to remember that you do have new ears over at the uh, central office.
Yes.
So hopefully it will go better this year.
Oh, yes, there will also be the letter to the schools. Yep, that'll be signed by the select board and FinCom chair that we'll be working on too.
So you have new ears that will be hearing this, this year, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
All right, uh, so moving down, consideration of a request for special municipal employee status.
So this is a slight change from what we originally thought that it would be after seeking some guidance here. Um, because we are a small community, we are actually, uh, the um, individual here who works at the library. Is seeking to be able to hold multiple municipal positions. And because we are a town of under thirty-five hundred, the select board just has to approve that exemption. Rather than make it a special municipal employee position. So it is actually a vote of the select board to approve. What they're, literally to approve an exemption for um, the individual employee. Um, whose name isn't on here. What's her name? Thank you. Um, the, the children's librarian to hold multiple municipal um, positions.
Which if I understand it, one of those is like as a substitute teacher.
Yes.
Schools, yes.
Correct.
I would so move that we uh, allow her to be whatever the exemption is or special municipal employee that she can hold. Multiple part-time positions within the town.
Yep.
Mm hmm.
Thank you. And this was the guidance she received from state ethics um, when she called as to how that the select board just had to take a vote.
Mm hmm.
To approve that.
If they were second?
Uh, uh, yes, but um, um, I still am not certain about this. I talked with Kristen about it this morning. Um, because of what I'd gone through when I was on school committee and I was able to do. You know, do a special, at that time, a special um, whatever it's called, municipal um, employee.
Right, and I have to look into whether or not, it, it sounds like regional schools may be able to do that designation. But in this case, fortunately, we have to figure that out for the future. But in this case, we just have to give an exemption. So it's a little bit easier.
But what, the part I just didn't understand is that only one of the three employments is in the town of Berlin.
Right.
And it says that it would, in, even in the mass general law, it says that it would be of. More than one employment in the town or, or the municipality. And there is only one in Berlin. The other two are at the school, which is a regional school district.
Right, so it may be that the district has to do something as well, but the guidance that she received from state ethics was just that Berlin has to authorize that exemption.
And I'm fine with my motion even if it's unnecessary.
All right, so there was a second?
I mean, I, I, I will second it. I just don't feel confident that it's necessary. What we're doing and that she may need to go to a different place to um, get her, what she needs done.
I mean, I'm looking at the letter from our town council and if they said it's okay, then I'm gonna.
But the, the last. For holding more than one appointed physician with said town. She only has one from Berlin and the state, and it states blah, 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 but.
Well.
You know, that, that's the part that bothers me. So, eh, eh, regardless, you know, we can.
We'll move on. All right, so a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain. I'll sit.
Okay. All set, Dee? Okay. All right, next up on the agenda is for consideration of an application for two. One-day special pouring license for Iamalo, uh, Iamalo, thank you, wine cellars to be utilized at nineteen Carter. On November twenty-first and January sixteenth of next year.
I wanna say, when I read it, I continue to read it as limoncello and keep.
I know.
Really excited. It's gonna be a limoncello tasting, but.
Sounds delicious.
Does it sound delicious? But uh, uh, I'm assuming the departments have given their feedback and it's fine. I would do a motion that we support the uh, two one-day special pour licenses for uh, Iamalo wine sellers to be utilized at nineteen Carter. Uh, uh, thank you, uh, at, at November twenty-first and January sixteenth.
Second. All right, any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris? You and I, or no, or an abstain?
No, I said aye.
Okay, all right, sorry. Um, and then last up came in late, uh, late change is a consideration of a request to appoint uh. Shifali, Senyal and Kerry Carlucci as election workers.
Yes, there was a need at the last minute to have two additional election workers for tomorrow. This was brought to us today. And so this was not an anticipated um, request. So we did um, put it on the agenda for the board's consideration. Since we have a presidential election tomorrow.
Right. Wait a few weeks, second.
All right, all those, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye. All righty, uh, we are down to board questions, liaison updates. Scott, go.
Did any updates on the towers, radio towers? Cause normally that's a line in your report. It wasn't this time.
It is. So um, we finally have a lease agreement that is drafted. And I'm having it reviewed by council and believe it or not, I just got the comments back today. So uh, tomorrow I'll be reviewing that and forwarding it back to the company. Once we have that lease agreement entered into. Hopefully, we can move forward with the actual installation of the new equipment.
Uh, I'm filing.
Chris?
Um, I'm just looking at the top here that I wrote down some things that uh, might be well to be put on an agenda. Designate a town building for storage was one thing. Um. And uh, policy on, I had talked about this. I don't know if it's um, something we could talk about. Policy on town property use for private usage. It came up with the uh, request to have a birthday party down at the gazebo, I think.
Uh huh.
So we, you know, might be well to get a, a policy put together for it, for when it arises.
Do you, don't we have, don't we have a policy for Dee? Do you, don't we have, don't we have policy for D, for event permit? Don't we have an event policy for use of town property for events?
No, I don't think we do.
Oh, we don't? We issue a, a permit though.
I thought Margaret did too.
Yeah, I'll try to find it.
Okay, uh, we'll, we'll do a little digging.
Okay, well, I mean, okay, well, whatever.
Alright, anything else?
Um, how's the, how's, is town council rewriting the soil by law?
Yes, that'll be on May town meeting.
Okay, May town meeting, okay, I think December, okay.
Alright, um, and I have nothing, so is there any other business, or can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alright.
Okay.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.